Let's get this pre-session started. Um, let's do a, let's do a roll call. Suzie.
So Suzie and all the parents?
Yeah, just, just Suzie.
Do we have to?
Yeah.
It's been recorded, so.
Okay, so. Is it?
There's no reason for it.
Yeah.
The bus service.
Yeah.
Erica's taking her.
Okay, so do we want to do attendance, or?
No, just say your name.
Okay.
Suzie.
Oh, Sean Roy.
Aaron Rodriguez.
Okay. Marcia Martin.
Martin.
Eugene May.
Harold Minus.
Okay, great. Let's go around giving updates, please, on my update list that I wrote down. Do you want to talk to Starbuck too?
I'm sure in terms of boards and commissions, they don't need to report.
Okay.
The crab, I mean, just, the crab is keen to see something happen with a valid question. They're mindful that if there's, if there's not a better organized effort on behalf of whatever we decide, if we decide to put something on the dot, they have little chance, Suzie. And I did suggest to them that if they're going to come and speak to us at some point in time, we're going to be in the process of having to set some priorities. Some things are going to be more important than others, even though they're in the recreation package, and that they ought to be really clear on what their priorities are, and I can first, last. And so that, you know, because if they know somebody will be up for them, in fact, that's somebody that informed me, I mean, they won't run into the horse.
Marcia Martin. Okay. Well, my efforts with my boards have focused mainly on whether they would have enough applicants for the next round of interviews. Isn't full of their empty seats. The other ones that I, that I said on have these problems. The hope is not me. They are all trying hard to improve. They don't, by any means, have no quorum.
Oh.
Yeah. And that is, that's, that's how, that's how that happens. So I need to check with Dawn. I didn't actually get that done today, because we've got two more days. And that's it. And that's it. I, I, I don't know. Maybe, maybe one of the staff persons who are in this room, none of whom are from the city courts office, could tell us whether the application period could be extended.
I don't know. I don't think there's anything that their business would ask.
You know, we let, we let Mary Lynn be late with her last application, and we all felt sad for her and let her apply later. She's on the board.
She knew Dawn and getting an answer back was, you know.
See, I will, I will tell Dawn to let you all know. That's me if I get an answer to that.
Yeah. It has to be right away.
Yes, it has to be right away.
I.
I don't think they decide to extend it. I don't think.
Today was, was a weird day. I was suffering the aftermath of the library loss today.
Oh, your application took off, right?
Yeah.
So we have to decide maybe offline as a maturity.
Well, if you were okay with us extending us, you'd think that. You know, me, Jeanne, and I can, if those are seen, whatever those procedures.
I just had a question. It's not because the board's not full, it's people on the shore commuting, is that right?
No, the airport advisory board didn't have enough applicants to completely seat every number.
Okay.
All the, to fill all the seats. Last time they were down a seat, and then someone got employed because of growing pains, I think, and resigned. So they're down, it was only ever a five or six seat, it was small. And being down two people means it's really easy to get. All it takes then is one person to be sick.
Does everybody in here want to?
I would like, I would like to see it extended, to, I mean, and then just make a big push to.
Yes. Sure, are you okay?
Yeah, I'm okay.
Here.
Yeah, it's fine. But sometimes historic preservation has some form issues, but it's fully seen it, so, yeah.
Oh, they just don't show.
They don't show.
Interesting.
Yeah, that's, yeah, and that's not uncommon, especially from right about now until September. It's not uncommon to see vacations in different places impacted.
Thanks, Marcia, we would have known that if you.
Yeah, you know, so, so more like historic preservation, you know, it's, it's not very threatened to be in wagered processes if they don't have a quorum, especially over the summer. On the other hand, water, airport advisory, I would think Land and Zoning must have, has failed the quorum, but it would be a bad thing to.
It's very rare that PNC doesn't need a quorum.
Yeah. But I think CAP is, is right at the edge of, you know. Go there, because it's not my board, but my friends on CAP.
I would say slightly different as advisory boards versus commissions. I mean, historic preservation and PNC have specific functions.
Yes.
Decision-making functions, so.
Yes.
Speaking of which, how's PNC doing?
PNC didn't meet last month, they meet tomorrow, so. Historic had a retreat, and then in the follow-up, which was just a week after the retreat, had a meeting where they finished up with some thoughts they didn't get to in their retreat, which will, at some point, I'm sure, be coming to us as far as what they consider cleanup in the land development code or moving also historic preservation to the land development code, which we did, kind of sets a different section of the use code at the time being. And so they're, they're looking at those kinds of things, as well as refining suggestions that they'll make to seek counsel concerning demolitions. As they, they're looking at some other things, too, that I think they, they kind of got some cold water splashed on or some ideas they had. As far as folks who are not already designated, and either incenting them to designate or forcing this designation, or the other. And like I said, I think there's some cold water splashed on them as far as that's concerned. A lot of media meets, not this week, but next week. And so they have some exciting things going on, but nothing else. You know, I don't think, as far as I know, that they've set one new exact directive yet. I'm not very, I've heard, I've heard lightly, I've heard initially on that. Let's see. Community Solutions has, I mean, twenty-sixth, or the morning, and that's specifically the Colorado 119 Subcommittee of Community Solutions. So my months have generally backed over, if those are the reasons.
Seems like Colorado 119 has been discussed and re-discussed.
Re-discussed.
Pretty much. Well, I mean, it is, it seems continually come down to finishing the funding and finishing with some.
Exactly.
And, you know, I've heard, we're starting to hear more public input, and as you can imagine, it's, it's both sides of the story, so we're very excited for the pathway that could go potentially down the middle. I would say it's fine the way it is, which I don't disagree with, but, but anyway. And then, you know, we all have our opinions on bus traffic transit needs. So.
So the 119, the finishing of that depends, depends on the race bracket. We don't need the race bracket.
Right, right. And we did get the separate from Colorado 119 when I spoke with our community use in DC. The earmark for our microtransit was granted. The earmark for our, our water system was not, because apparently that was too woke.
Water?
Yes, I know. I don't, I don't quite understand.
But microtransit is not.
Microtransit is not one. Our water improvements were too woke, and he thinks that there's another process that he might be able to use to help us with our, our water system.
What's a woke?
Well, you know.
I understand what woke is.
Yes.
Yeah, I said, I don't understand. He, he, he had a hard time explaining it himself. He's like, well, they didn't want to put any earmarks in that were explicitly woke, clearly. How does that apply?
Anything that's all environmentally.
No, it's, I'm just relaying what I'm just saying.
Good plan.
He, he thinks that there's another mechanism, a different thing that he possibly could affect.
It's probably, it's probably related to the fact that, that the Colorado River ruckus.
Probably. Well, and, you know, so I'm sure, I don't know what people in Arizona signed in the press conference.
Well, Arizona signed on, it was California.
Yeah, it was California that was the only one that was.
Various, yeah, various, um, people in the American East, so.
Interesting. Sure.
Okay.
Well, interesting thing, the Consortium of Cities has moved their meeting from the sixth of April to the twenty-sixth of April, and so I'll be going to that. That's also the same night as ARCAB, and so I'll just get back with Charlie and me in regards to what happens there. I think he's the actual voting person on that, on the ARCAB. So let me just get a report from him. The interesting thing with the Consortium of Cities is on March thirty-first, there was a minimum wage meeting, and Sandy couldn't make it, so Becky Doyle attended with me. And it was just kind of one of those things where they, they would like to keep talking about, you know, having a minimum wage here in Boulder County, where Longmont and Boulder and the surrounding others communities all came up with a decisive minimum wage, whether that's eighteen dollars an hour, nineteen dollars an hour. I think it's a little bit, just kind of out of step with looking at the, at the economic environment right now, and it's hard to tell some of the folks in Boulder, you know, when you get all the things that Longmont has done to bring the cost of living down for, for your folks as well as Longmont has with, you know, having Wi-Fi and the next light and picking up our own trash and collection and all the other things. And maybe they should come back and talk to us then, but they're not really listening to those things.
It, it sounds, I want to ask a question. Have they gotten away from the state statute in terms of intent? Because the, the state statute was, basically, you can have, declare yourself a region that's going to have a minimum wage, which is a good idea.
I don't mean anybody's against that.
Right.
Idea.
And, but the other thing about the statute is that it, it only limits how much the minimum wage can go up in, in a particular period. I think it's a year.
Yeah.
So that would amount.
And it can't, and that's, they did talk about that.
Yeah. And so, you know, I mean, a, a sense of minimum wage for here is about eighteen dollars an hour in the sense that.
And that's where, that's why I use that figure.
Yeah, but that figure is way above what the statute actually put in. It's going to be, you know, thirteen or something, which means there's no point in not doing that thing.
Yeah, well, see, the, the, the end is just getting council direction on that. And I don't want to give them, you know, a solid yes, or a feeling like that, that I can give them a solid yes without having to come as a directive from council. And I'd happily do whatever anybody wants to have me pass forward. But then on the twenty-fourth, is the, is the, is a group that would like to talk about this, and it's a union group and other things like that, but I've been a little hesitant.
Minimum Wage Coalition.
Yeah, I've been a little hesitant to, to attend that meeting without any, just being there as a, as a warm body, I guess I can do that.
I, I, I signed up to attend, because I was initially in the steering committee, and so I kind of left off, and it didn't seem like we were really meeting regularly, and then it would kind of go off on tangents. But we did come up with a timeline of certain benchmarks. And one of the things, you know, is like, okay, well, I would feel better moving forward if we got this communication out to the, to stakeholders. So, you know, making community groups and have, getting eliciting input from businesses to determine, you know, is this right for our community? Is it, you know, to have that buy-in factor.
Yeah.
And, yeah, and then, and then it was like, okay, we're going to set up another meeting, and nothing happened.
So didn't we say that we were going to have Jeff come to council and see part of the coalition?
Yeah, I, I, that is the email I sent on to you.
Yeah.
And it's Jeff.
Calhoun.
Calhoun.
Calhoun. Calhoun, Calhoun. Yeah.
So I'm, I'm, at, at that point, he never.
Well, he left me a message today about different subjects, so I'll look back and see if that's.
He was with AFL-CI, I don't know.
Yes, he was with the Boulder.
Labor Council.
Yeah. I think it was a lot of work there. Okay. So, okay, we'll follow up on that.
Who's on with the, with?
Jeff.
Yeah. He's on with the AFL-CI?
Well, I'm not sure if it's AFL-CI, Tim, or if it is the Boulder coalition, Union coalition, that he was there.
Because I'm on a Zoom call with him and somebody else this morning, I got this invitation.
Oh, ask him.
I know this is.
Ask him.
But I, I, because I can't, whatever they, the twenty-fourth?
Yeah.
I couldn't do that, I've got something else to, so they'll say.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, she, this question.
I was just.
So then, Art and Public Places, they're just putting in different installations, starting, it looks like tomorrow and, I think it's Saturday, Thursday. And you've probably already seen, if you've been down to the museum, you've seen the wings wall there. That's kind of cool.
Yes. I did have a question about Sean's previous subject, because it, it seems to me like they're having trouble figuring out how they're, the Consortium of Cities is, is, they're having trouble figuring out how they're supposed to interact with the cities. It seems to me that they should be, they should agree on a proposal or a resolution and then send it out to the cities, to the different councils.
That is.
Yeah.
So would you send me an email about what you're thinking, so that I?
I will do that, yes.
Yeah, Erie will be the interesting one, I guess.
And never. I, I liked when we met, it was the Erie representative. Actually, I liked what they had to say in regard to, you know, being more pragmatic. Whereas Boulder.
Yeah, well, he was, he and I, the same thing, yeah, the Erie guy and I, we were talking the same language, and, you know, like.
But, yeah, I feel like it was more pragmatic.
He was really kind of like, you guys don't quite, you, you keep getting the horse out of the barn, but you don't have anything hooked to it, and you don't know what you're doing, and, and everything. But Marcia, if you'll send me what you're thinking, that way then I'll, I'll.
And there was a community meeting, I can't remember when, it was in December. I remember I joined it via Zoom, but it's not, but it wasn't, it wasn't very well attended, considering it's all of Boulder County.
Well, I think it was just trying to get things out the window, and what during the holiday season, so.
But you can understand my hesitancy to go, jump on something on the twenty-fourth, just to be there and go, and have them put you on the spot and say.
Well, no, if they ask me anything, I'll be honest.
Yeah, well, that happens too.
And I'll also share my frustrations of being part of the steering committee.
Okay.
And, you know, not on the floor, but.
No, obviously, nobody's really against it.
Well, this is like two, two, three things.
Yep, three things, four things.
Yeah.
Okay, Suzie.
So Library Board, Museum hasn't met yet. I realized when they shifted their meeting to the earlier date, I had, and, yeah, so it was off, so we haven't met. Same thing with us at council. But the library, I don't know if you all saw the, I saw that it did come out, the Library Board recommendation for supporting the library.
Other recreation.
Yeah, so, and there was a lot of discussion around that, that PDC outcomes and feasibility study. There was also discussion around, you know, their roles. And so they're really trying to figure out as a board, what would their roles and expectations be, and, and how they could do it that would best serve the library. So I, I really see that it's a group that has the library at the heart of the company, and that, so that commitment to that, so I thought that was really, that, that's good. The other, so, and this was, the advisory board, or a couple of people that I spoke with, were really excited about this idea. So remember when the students from Silver Creek paint?
Yes.
And Marsh Rooney?
Yes.
He was talking about the mural that he wanted to paint in Silver Creek.
He did paint?
No, it was not.
That's a burden.
It actually did.
They made him paint it.
I thought he painted it.
Was it painted?
He said they did. Yes. They painted it over. So it was not, it was not allowed to stay. So he's looking at, and I've been in contact with Carrie Adams, and looking at, you know, possibly doing that work maybe in the parking lot of the library, or in some space. Because I actually saw the, the mural, and so it was.
It was good.
It looks good, because there are arts in public places.
So that's what we were, that's what we were talking about. So, you know, maybe that could be an option of getting that, connecting them with arts and public places.
So, so would he go and present art in public places? Is that the way it works? Eric?
No, Sean.
Yeah, no, yeah, I believe that is the way it works, he just has to put in a, get on the agenda, explain what he's interested in doing and concerning, help him get on the agenda.
Who should reach out to?
Well, since you've been contacting, do you want you?
I've contacted Mar, or I've contacted Carrie for another issue, and that.
And just, and send it on to.
That would be great.
Yeah, just letting you know who I can.
Angel, Angelina Burrow.
Is there an explanation in the background, or is it a lot that you wrote this?
No, but I don't want to draw assumptions, but I kind of know the personal offering, so.
Personal opinion?
Personal opinion. So, I mean, yeah, but, no. I think it was explained to Carrie and Marsh, but, but, yeah, he was, he was devastated.
Thanks for following up on that.
Yeah.
It really shows coming to council and working, it shows how, how it can work by reaching out. Great PR. So do you have anyone?
So it was the library. The council. Oh, I'm on, hey, you cut my boards. So, no, I'm the.
I gave you an order.
I've been, no, 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 sorry. I'm the alternate for the Consortium of Cities. And, oh, and I can go to ARCAB. They're still virtual, right? Yeah, I, I can do that if you need to go to the consortium.
Oh, yeah, that works, yeah.
All right, send it to you now.
Yes, please.
So, now, LMAF. I can't go to LMAF because it conflicts with LADU on Mondays. So we're going to have a meeting at noon in the.
Monday.
Mondays.
So I, I'm, I'm really interested, I don't know if you have anything more than that?
I'll email you.
Yeah, email me, we'll, we'll figure out.
Is that the second one of the month?
I think it is, yeah.
The computer conflicts with that.
Okay. Oh, and LC was my other one, but they meet on Thursday, so.
Yeah. Okay, well, Sean, okay. I'm having your, I'm not on the network for some, for some. So tomorrow, the youth summit press release is going to come out, and that is the summit that we're holding for the district stadium dollars, and staff is doing an incredible job, especially Brad, that was a little pennyworth. So I kept, I knew she, she did the whole video and the presentation geared only to kids, so they should really like it. We are accepting virtual input, or accepting in-person input, emails, snail mail, anything that they want. So that should be attended, we will, it's going to be on Saturday, May thirteenth. So also, Dale Radmaker and I testified Friday for the, excuse, for the fourth plea, Bill. And it was, we went down because we were supposed to testify over it, and we had time to go to lunch, because there was a lot of Jewry there that we knew was, so it wasn't on time. At about three-thirty, we decided to hold. So we signed up remotely, and we testified in eight thirty at the.
Wow.
So that was a long. And I also testified twice for them. Kimberly McKeon, the tip, Bill, that they wanted, after fifty years, to present an example. There was a lot of discussion around it. To be honest, there was a lot of discussion that was mutiny, because the need to this up, very complicated type of thing, when a life, she was early, I think, she was in music, so. So we did that. Also, I've been working with staff, it shouldn't be as far as anybody that I've been working on homelessness and helping for eight years. So after I got elected, I talked to Harold about what I, you know, my vision would be of campus, homelessness and stuff. So knowing how overloaded staff has, obviously, that I would be willing to the small group people to do all the research and bring it back to staff. So we've been working together basically for a year and a half on this, which brought about the tour that we, you were all invited to, that Suzie and I went to our, what project?
The Lawrence.
The Lawrence Project in Denver, which will come back to council at some point this, girls, Friday. But the research that we've been doing, hopefully, will come back in May. I think we're pretty much done to tell what we've been doing, ask for input, et cetera, et cetera. At this point, I just don't really know what we're doing yet. The other thing is that Earth Day is Saturday. I will be working at Cox and Tino, part of that. But the other thing is that I cannot pronounce this man's name. Harold, you met with him in Erie, the Nepalese, I can't remember their name, and you'd have to be a voice, you know. I listened to it three times, and I still can't.
Yeah, I still remember that.
At any rate, they have this incredible celebration that I've gone to for years, but I can't because I'm working the Earth Day. There's going to be about seven hundred people there, who would like to have some, I called today instead of doing it. He would like somebody from council to go, it's called the Erie. Johnny Bruce is going to be there, there are going to be a lot of mayors there, it's huge celebration. And it's not just Nepalese, it's basically people from NDR, any different sex. So if anybody would like to go, let me know. I would like so, Harold, for representation on that, if you're interested. Even with that, I'm just saying, you know. Okay, it is Saturday, so he wants to see me tonight this week. We also have Light the Night Saturday.
But she's also, they're doing a thing on Thursday.
They're, I'm sorry, it's not Saturday, it's Thursday. It's called Light the Night. You've been there this Thursday?
Yes, it's at Front Range.
Well, there are two of them, that's why.
Oh, maybe that's it, yeah.
Yeah. Light the Night is the one that we, that was at the park in Denver.
That is National Night Out.
Oh, did you remember the same thing? For some reason, I have to do the same thing. Okay, at any rate, you can research that, it's all over the place. So that's about it, all I have. I'll continue to work. I am going to talk to, I didn't know a lot about the centers and about changing the way we transportation finance, because it passes it forward. Talk to Harold about this, and talk to, like, Dennis Johnson, Eric Davidson, the new guys at JRF Centers, Sonia Walch, and all of them, Karen Gray. I would like to visit to the, which Dennis Johnson is. I would like to present to them which Denny Johnson is very much for is a venue tax, no, I said it wrong, a venue fee. Instead of asking for a little tax on transportation. At the venue fee, we'd be in an amount, I would like to start with a dollar and then a quarter on every seat or soul, every Rockies, Denver Broncos, Avalanche, Stop Show, Denver Performing Arts.
And hotels.
Hotel rental cars, yes. Because we're not going to be using those roads. And we cannot get a transportation pass. There's an interim transportation group that lives in summer, interim report of sessions that needs to discuss what could be, I emailed the group, they said I was going to be part of it. None of them goes quite a email back because the session, they don't have time to discuss anything else. So just, I personally would like your input on that on some level. Because we cannot continue to not have transit and say we don't have any for it. I mean, these things. So that's what I'm going to try to work with transportation in the community instead of working against them. Just say, let us help you figure it out. So.
Seems like a good idea. We made it to that. Whatever happened with the meetings between Hart and D and Cities?
Yeah, I've been working, so, um, on the 20th, getting the dates mixed up. 12th versus the 27th, they're going to have some regional meetings in terms of a call for potential partnership projects. And then they have a relatively short duration in terms of whom you can submit the projects. And then they will begin moving through what projects and what partner. So Phil's aware of it and the same information we put together, John Euse on the microtransit request is what we put into this. They are aware that, when I met him, that John Euse has, he got pushed into the actual next phase of this. And so they were interested in it. And then we began the actual projects. The key thing that came out of this is they're willing to look at a financial partnership in terms of how it works. And they're, you know, had some really good conversations about that. They know that this is, they're looking for creative projects. And they know that you may not get the information that you need in a year or so, so they're willing to ride it out longer to see how it works. The key piece in the process, and frankly for John Euse's points too, because there are federal funds that are shifting now. Procureable pieces are going to be something that everyone has to focus on, which is why they're going through this application process. Because you can misstep, you can misstep pretty quickly. You look through these public sources if you don't really make sure you're in line with procurement processes. So that's going to be coming out and Phil's ready for that meeting. And we have to submit our microtransit application.
And to that point, I have been talking to Kimberly McKee for L-D-D-A because I know that you've all heard about the parking issues with their hotel. And then it's going to screw up all the parking facilities. So she's concerned, actually not necessarily that there won't be a parking, but the attitude toward it. So we've been talking, well, actually for three years, but I think important now in order to have the transit for next year when we start construction of that hotel, to have some kind of a transit system now, starting with some people who are used to using it. Just bringing people who say they can't walk to downtown or if there's no parking. So I talked to Sarah Ferguson, Jennifer Ferguson, I wonder if she's interested in being part of that conversation. But I have to refer Phil, Kimberly, and Jennifer will be discussing the city. There are a lot of, there are a lot of issues we have. But I want to help Kimberly because this is huge for her to have that parking, that we work on. And Front Range Passage and Trail District has submitted their application for the S-E-P service delivery claim. And that, there's $500,000 that we applied for, and that will be decided in August. So we need that $500,000 because if we get it, then basically FRA says you're in. And they will help us all the way through because they have to agree to our services too. So that's what we're working on and hopefully get that back to the possible people. How about Kimberly's? Kimberly's issue. What about working with Frank Bula and just extending the on-demand services that we have? Where's that going to be part of this conversation? But she's the one who said that she'd like to be talking to her. Maybe she's part of the downtown. Her office is there and something, Mia, Mia has a reputation for what it does. She wants it to be an I-AB-B. I wanted a rooftop trolley, but they cannot give a financial plan. I've asked them here three times, they're like, no. So she said, talk to Jennifer, she, she already knows how to do it. So that was the first point. So we don't know where it's going to be. So that's all about.
The challenge on that is, is it's not so much the people that are working. So like, we know, we live, our staff to St. John's out of that parking lot. It's the consumers that the on-demand is, is the challenge. And I've seen the parking study and there's enough parking spots. There's just not enough parking spots close to some of these places. And so, but I know that they're working and trying to figure it out. Because it really is that.
See, I'm.
It's, it's that I'm driving in to go eat downtown and, you know, catch a lift two blocks over versus calling and setting up that call ride. So it's a slight difference.
But at some point, then it'd be wonderful to have a trolley system going up and down that little section there to get any people back up and back and forth.
Well, the other point for me also is when we get our transit station built in '25 or '26, we hope that they'll be used to it and they'll know. So real fast, ethics committee, what I've given you, I pulled out and I sent it to the email and don't worry, is the Fort Collins Ethics thing. I just pulled out a portion of it, I think, pertaining to us. So the very, so what is that? We discussed that and I want to know if the consensus is that the only thing we can do is censure. Because we talked about, you know, as far as holding people accountable once they are found to have been in, violated. Something that the only thing we can do without being a charter change or is to censure. Do we agree that that's the way we should build? Should we make a recall, should we have to go to the charter change?
I think it's a bad form to go for a recall with the people that are here. I think that really is, should be something that community members get riled up about and do if they really want to do. The thing is like, Eric Dorn stopped kind of making it comedians and finally the board kind of pulled aside, had the council finally pulled aside and said, Eric, you're real. I think that was the first step towards having, you know, kind of in this direction where you're going. But I think he finally read the writing on the wall and decided he had to resign because they're just, he just didn't have a band left to do anymore.
Right.
And so we're hoping that somebody makes choices if that's the case.
Okay. So I've read through the whole thing and the places, and this is just my opinion. If you disagree or you want to change. I think it would be easier for me to go through it first and say, this is what I see. So the very first one is, do we have anything under Section 2, Part 68? I also think I told Eugene today, this really is a block that's ours. Other cities have already noticed. They've vetted it, they've looked at the rules and I mean, the state statutes, the. So if we can adopt some of what they did, maybe take it or, and then give it to Eugene and say, is this, is this going to work?
And this section that you're talking about here is, is just a, this section we already have in place.
Pretty much.
And is there some spot, you know, I know that each of us, whether you came in like I did with a, and got up to speed on some things, working with Harold and others about things, or came in in groups of two or so.
Yeah.
To get some training as well. What, is there anything that is kind of like a written sort of document that says, this is how I will act, besides the oath we take of saying that you'll, you know, uphold the, you know, the constitution and those things like that? Is that, is there anything that kind of spells out ahead of time? That might be nice to have in front of people and say, remember when? Yes, I know.
Yeah, so I think there are two things here. First of all, I think that the ethics might be in ordinance. But what you might be talking about is decorum and rules of procedure. I mean, this is how we act, to me, is professionally, morally, I call it ethical as well, but it seems like everything I've read pertains to finance, is what we're talking about. Ethical in government. But if there's something else that you think should go in there, yes, no. So, um, so the other thing I've put on here of what we've already discussed are frivolous complaints. And that I addressed, they addressed, actually, like, let me see what he just said. And I want to see if that's what you think is better.
Joe, I'm getting troubled with this document because it meets a context. So the, like, who are the actors here? So it sounds like frivolous complaints, is this frivolous complaint by one council member against another or by a resident? Anyway, okay, anyway.
So basically, I put it in here and this was just my off-the-cuff feeling is that frivolous complaints might be entered by council and that we just mediated, you know, like whether to counsel, if we can do that first. Whether it's a person from the residents that we see them, they've come up to the RTVH and they're railing about somebody and we think, we don't have time to talk to them now. But I would say, you know what, if you really think that's a complaint, you can go to the side and draw up that complaint and we will talk to you about it. Rather than, it shouldn't go to staff. Staff should not monitor us or regulate us. We're self-regulating, not to self-stick. So what do you think about that idea?
Where's the frivolous complaint part? Who might think?
The very, last very.
Yes, it's I.B., the second. So what, you know, Fort Collins one said is that you learn why a legal, even if it's true, is minor in stature, fails to justify the use of public resources to investigate or prosecute. It's a waste of time. But it isn't, for me, it still needs to be addressed. Whether it's one council person or another council person. If it's the residents complaining about a council person.
Then that opens you up to a slippery slope of may not be staff's resources inside of you. We also have finite resources inside of his council. So to address every single complaint.
Well.
We're also.
You're right.
Because if they know, there's certain, I'm thinking, possibly there's certain members of the community who want to take advantage of subjectless.
Okay. Yeah, but what if on a form that we had, two different forms? One of them would be not that expensive, anybody, et cetera. Something that was quite serious. And then another form about someone's actions and the way they acted toward it or what they said. We could have on that form, like a dropdown menu, just choose one of these. And if it isn't in there, then that's, it's not working really well.
Well, speaking is probably the only one in this session that has been the target of the frivolous complaints. I see lots of problems with that because the frivolous complaint is based on 40,000 pages of junk science.
Well, you know, I mean. But it doesn't matter, that's your opinion and I don't want to get into that.
Well, that's exactly my problem.
Because that, they were accusing you of like financially gaining. What evidence, on what grounds? So I think if someone's going to file a complaint, they need to have the evidence.
Exactly.
Back up, they just can't say, well, I think.
They just, exactly, exactly.
And it's, and the fact that what they did was they moved the standing, their standing argument, you know? So, yeah, they're willing to admit that I don't have a financial interest or at least they're willing to admit that I might be able to prove that I don't. But they, so they now, now they're defining a conflict of interest as, well, I like them. Well, it would make me happy to see the city happy, have it up.
So they think that we have to like everybody in town?
No, 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 like, like smart beaters.
Oh, like, oh, okay, I was going to say.
The last thing is to be a floor, like, we need 200,000 signatures before we take it seriously. You know, and I'm not meaning that really as a joke, as in to disincentivize everybody just getting any frivolous complaint that they want.
But it's a thing to the person I counsel, you know?
But that's my point about the floor. Rather than having, like, somebody goes to Harold, we can say, can't fill out this form. But on the form, if we decide you need 200 signatures before this can come before.
Rises to a hearing.
And it's a hearing to maybe two people, to your point, to then have that, you know? Unless it takes to get a large council member on, about 50, 50 signatures. If that's what it takes to get somebody on, then, then it's going to take a bit of effort on their part to find that many signatures in town of people.
That's right, they have to put out the effort.
Yeah. I, I like the idea of having a, you know, a percentage specific or a, you know, why didn't we come up with 50 signatures for getting a council on, somebody nominated a council? Why not 200? Why not, you know, a percentage of the community?
That's going to do it. So that, any other ideas? Because we talked about if we have not a board, but at least one person that is reviewing the valid complaint. What about the frivolous? And I think those should be two separate forms to fill out. So someone says, what do you think, Kim? And are you taking this all in?
I'm still not certain what brought it to this, so. Well, in the time that I'm on this council, there's only one, one experience that is even relevant. So it would be helpful to me. And I appreciate those comments. But this is going to be a whole lot of time. I'd be curious to know how many times Fort Collins is actually utilized, whatever, whatever they're doing with their, with their system, with their policy. I'm willing to do whatever, but I, I'm not going to invest a whole lot of time. Or intellectual horsepower.
I don't want anybody to spend a whole lot of time. I think this is pretty easy, to be quite honest.
Doesn't sound like it.
I don't understand the distinction between things that have signatures and things that don't. I think they would actually be on signatures. So, and we're not talking about females who say they don't like. No, it's always a series, maybe.
No, no, no.
No, we're actually, I, I think it's, I think it's gonna be there, it's like, when I was a council the first time, we get to, we get to C N L, we're voting on something, and we all sit here and the mayor makes, uh, it's ready to, to vote on the thing that we're agreeing on with bylaws for C N L. And all of a sudden, you know, all of us are there, we all agree on it, and then the mayor at that time goes like this, and puts in that, and I look over his shoulder, and he's not voting along the lines of what we agreed on. That's something that would fall into this right here. If it was outrageous at the time, it'd be outrageous for anybody. And so that's the, that's the sort of thing that we don't want.
It's not defined in what's the, I understand
Yeah.
that somebody didn't carry out what
Well, that, that, that was
What's the ethical breach?
The ethical breach is that we, uh, we'd all agreed, it was something that, that we as representatives decided that we were gonna do, and then to have that person go and do that on the side here, where we are all supposed to be on the same page.
So the ethical breach in this case was that somebody voted their conscience?
No, they voted, uh, uh, well, I guess you could say voted their conscience, or voted, uh, the opposite way of what was good for the community.
What did they vote to?
Is that, yeah, but it is, does that rise to like an ethical
And that, see, that kind of thing.
And that's what I think also needs to be defined, because there are some people who would think that it falls under ethical, but it's, it's really, in the end, you know, we, as in, you know, we could vote how we choose to vote.
Well, we do that all the time, here.
Yeah, we do it, we do it all
But that was kind of, I always thought that was kind of a different one where we had kind of
But that, if you really felt that way, then it would go to some kind of an arbitrator, or it would not be
To tell you to write, so rather than us
Does this rise to the
Does it rise to the level
And to your point, that may be the case, I don't know.
I might see that as a principle, personally, right, you need to breed, and here's the principle. And with somebody to turn around and say, yeah, well, I voted my conscience, and you give them, tell me what that is, I don't know what I'd say to that, other than, yeah, I guess that's what we all do. But I think it was an unprincipled act.
Yeah.
But I, you know, what are you gonna do with that in terms of a formal process?
It's just where, where's that stop? You know, on other elements.
I'm curious, who decides what is or what's not frivolous?
I think too, like, like, if there is something, like, let's say we had an executive session, and then somebody shared something that, you know, we had all agreed to hold confidential, confidential. Um, would that be something that rises to the level of unethical?
Absolutely.
So that's, yeah, and so that's, you know, looking at those kinds of, because I think that might be something that would happen more often than any other kind of, like, community member or complaint.
Yeah.
I think, I, that's the only thing I can think of, that that might be something that would happen.
Yeah, I think there's a way to shut down complaints or community members just by saying this doesn't rise to any kind of mediation.
I just based up what we've heard in council chambers, we've talked about. I wish, I wish I wasn't a part of those two.
Well, yeah, but they can say whatever they want, but if they want to complain to staff about someone, staff should be able to say, you know what, they want this form. And, you know, we're not gonna discuss it with you. And that's part of what I wanna do, because they've been involved this year, and, um, so it just feels like they shouldn't have to.
Staff, that's
Well, that's what I've heard. So, anyway, um, I've heard, I'd like to hear, well
See, I'm in the dark. And state complaints about council members, the staff thing, resolved.
That they've heard, whether they
Were they talking to a resident off the ledge?
I don't know. But they should be able to say, you know, we have a process, if not, if you think this, if you would like to follow up, this is a one, you need to go off, period.
I guess that happens with the form.
I think it's not uncommon for us to say they're self-believing bodies. I've heard it said that a few times, but
And I think with a lot of people, the very depth, that they have to actually do something, they don't do it.
Yeah, I do kinda like the idea of having to get, uh, residents' signatures at least a certain amount that takes to take it to that, I think that almost needs to be a component of it. We're gonna continue to pursue this, it has to have some sort of effort on the ones that are making that.
Let's, let's, can we use some real examples?
I don't know if there's any, uh, thing specific other than, uh, it, you know, we take Marcia's situation here, you know?
Oh, I mean, I think, there is an example that, that might fit this, but it isn't about Marcia. Although Marcia was a problem, but so was I, and so was, the, the parking on around West Side Tavern.
Oh, yeah.
Right, I mean, there was this whole narrative about council members having some agenda to put somebody out of business and do it through, through parking. And I can see that as an example for a business. In fact, that business owner was trying to generate a petition or, you know, a, a So, is, so what, is that a situ, is that an example of
It is an example.
how this might be handled?
Exactly, it's an example.
And then they have to take the effort to do it and everything of it.
Yeah. Well, there was also a, I won't name it, but there was a resident that was trying to get a rest in trouble as well, so to have him, you know, just, because he complained, and we personally had an event, I'll tell you.
Yeah, well, we wouldn't get involved in that.
No, I mean, not at all, and I said, you need to make a complaint, if that's true, I can, and well
But that was a resident complaining about business.
About rest, yeah. So
You know, I think
It went back and forth, and back and forth, but I think we have a process. We can stop some of that and say, you know, if we can have it mediated, but you need to fill out this form with your complaint, what is your complaint? Because it needs to be hearsay.
There should be a signature threshold, if, if the person doesn't get to decide whether it's frivolous and just almost
And timeframe, and, uh, timeframe for collection and the timeframe.
Sure, it's time, right? Yeah. Like a timeframe, you mean a statute of limitations?
Well, yeah, time, uh, no, I'm saying like, you know, from the point of, of, uh, of pushing send, and you getting the, the documents printed, you have to get, you know, your signatures within two weeks, somewhere.
Yeah, that was, um, that was addressed in here at some point, they said thirty days.
Thirty days, whatever.
I still be curious, and then if, and I, if Fort Collins could provide some examples of how, what's happened and how this applied, that would be really useful, to see it as, as a practical. So it's not hypothetical, theoretical, or telechondra.
I'm, I'm with you, Tim, I just think it's, I I can see it fortunately
Yeah, you know, we're becoming a bigger city, where we don't wanna have, you know, wishy-washy and kind of, you know, very laid-back rules of procedure, so I understand where you're coming from. I guess I'm, I'm just trying to kind of visualize, envision what that would look like in the end.
Well, we had it also with Bottom Farm, accusing the developer, um, it would be really nice
Door deals, I'm hearing a lot of that.
Yes, it would be really nice to be able to sit down with them in some mediation and say, this is planning zoning. We, you know, they follow the code, they follow the zoning, um, these
Why, why hasn't that happened yet?
Well, that's my point, but it probably is.
I think by primarily, it's more of the, somebody was, there was an expectation of somebody to accuse themselves.
Well
You would see, we're all hearing different things, and that's where I think that they could sit down and we had a specific idea of what
We have a mediation department, team, and services, and, uh, the housing division, community services. I mean, we have that capacity, we have the expertise right now. But that wouldn't be, for us, that would be, I would think, staff or P and Z folks saying, if you have, if you wanna, if you got a dispute, we have a service to resolve that. Or you can get an attorney and file a lawsuit, but that doesn't really do that.
Yeah, like going to, on West Side Tavern, we tried that. One side or the other, I don't know, one if you're going to
I'm just saying, that got resolved.
It went away, because on one side or the other, they never agreed.
But I, that, that could have gotten, that could have escalated in some pretty interesting ways, if we had enabled it to escalate.
So I think, in this document, as Mary explained, almost everything relates to literally financial issues or, or something along that, which is specifically ethics-related issues, right? And so just like, uh, in P and Z, when they're appealing the decision of P and Z, they have to meet these three criteria, right? And it should be the same thing. Does this complaint meet
Yes.
a financial complaint? Does it meet, if, if no, we're just gonna throw it away.
Yeah, exactly, that's my
Or we'll file it, but that's about it.
So if, if this was defined as conflicts of interest, that's one thing. And that's, I think that's pretty straightforward.
I, I, well, I think that's, as you said, it is in a, you know, issue of principle, or is it issue of ethics? And I think that's where we're going to have to delineate, and that will completely cut out frivolous complaints, so. Well, I just don't
Yeah. Well, I think it's good opinion, that's why, that's why we
And it will make more of a drive, as far as the procedure, like, who determines if this is true as well? If it doesn't meet these
Exactly, you said much better than that, that the farm has to say it has to meet one of these three, these four, whatever.
And that should be regardless of whether it's public or, or fellow council colleagues, I guess, making the accusation.
We know.
I know, we're running